Right, it's nine o'clock, let's start the meeting. Mr. Entor, is there any corrections or additions to your agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are four action items to add. Fourteen A is a board of adjustment appointment we can address at the end of the part of the meeting. Fourteen B is an intermittent part-time deputy sheriff court security appointment. Fourteen C is a buffer strip seating award review with county engineer at the after number thirteen. And fourteen D is a part-time Hartland bus appointment we can also address with the HR director.
Okay, is there any reports from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, Brown County Evaluation Center personnel meeting on report on, and also a red meeting.
Okay. I don't have any. Nothing for me, all right. Your agenda for today. We have the minutes of August eighth.
Motion to approve.
Second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sheriff, activity reports.
Multiple report, any questions?
I had one, Sheriff, it took me a minute to get into my program here. I think, was it to humor something on the bottom, was it like thirty-five thousand dollars a shoulder or something? I think it must be a title.
You were payment?
Let me just get to it in four.
Civil fees paid?
Civil fees paid, is that what it was?
Yeah, I assume that's what you're looking at. Maybe extra five in there or something.
I think there was a.
Big one?
Yeah, there was a major sale. Let me do some checking and I'll get back to you, okay?
Sounds good, thanks.
We're scrambling over there when our main people is out on the medical, so.
That's all I have.
Motion to approve.
Got it. Motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Jean. Claims.
Hundred seventy-two thousand, seven twenty, twenty-four is what I bring today. If there's anything particularly unusual, please. If you have questions, I certainly will answer them. Check two.
I will approve. Motion second. Motion second, any other discussion? See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Warning, number four.
Just to page your pairs, one is tile washout, the other was a, this, the initial jet of the line that was padlocked.
I'm open.
Second. Motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Karen.
This is a request to reapply for a grant for two thousand and ten families, which is a collaborative for the childhood and for thirty thousand dollars. This is a grant that we typically get on annual basis, but there's been a lot of inconsistencies since I've been here. Some years we get a lot of an RFP, some years they don't want one, and I want that community and I'm hoping we'll go forward with some more consistency. But this year, there was a request for an RFP, so the RFPs went out to the entire community, so we completed one. So, this is to help our universal contact and our follow-on program.
Is there a limit to how much we can request in a grant? Is that possible?
I'm sure we could request more, I just think I'm on a, you know, one's probably a hundred, so that's what I usually stick with. We fund usually three organizations, up to four organizations, just to inspire, as usual, apply, so. We had twenty-five thousand dollars funded in the past, but we've been, we've had more funds recently, so I should have been for thirty more for that call that looks like funds that we have the same issue.
I noticed, I think, towards the end here, whatever shows that we've got about eighteen thousand tax levy dollars involved in it yet? We can't make that up.
I don't think so. There's other qualifications in three of them. Not sure.
Strictly numbers.
Money.
I'll move through.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any other discussion? See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
This request for the board is to accept the life insurance plan bid with the enhancements submitted by Oakes. They received this, restricted the RFP process from the Minnesota Life Insurance Company. And we, it would be for a five-year premium rate guarantee effective January first, two thousand and eighteen. Basic life is point zero eight five per month for thousand dollars. Basic exit all death coverage is never in point two, point zero two per month for thousand dollars. And then the supplemental rate, so also remains unchanged effective January first, two thousand and eighteen. Yes, follow-up.
Yes, true. On the supplemental life, I see that for new employees, the guaranteed issue won't, it's going to go up to two hundred thousand, one hundred thousand. Is that new hires only, what about current employees, like now, one chance to?
No, it's only going to be new hires only, that's their hand, that's just for the new hires.
Right. And the coverage is from birth to age twenty-six?
Correct.
Regardless of status, status being full name student?
Right.
Or what if they're married?
From what it sounds like, it's.
Playing age twenty-six?
Yes.
Why the lack of bids? We only got one bid on this.
I don't know, we went, Oakes was, has been our broker for a number of years, and they sent out the request through the normal media means and all that, and I'm not sure, they didn't say why they felt they didn't get one, but.
I'll move the life insurance acceptance of the contract. It is a reduction from where it had been, and it's five year rate lock, so that's pretty good.
Okay, I'll second it. Any motion second, any other discussion? See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
This one is to accept the short-term disability insurance plan bid submitted by Oakes. They received this from the Madison National Life Insurance Company through the request for proposal bid process. And it would be a two-year premium rate guarantee effective January first, two thousand and eighteen. That's at twenty-seven cents per ten dollars with these others.
I'll move it. Second. Motion second, any other discussion?
Again, this was a small reduction in rate.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agreed?
This request is to accept the long-term disability insurance plan bid submitted by Oakes, which they also received from Madison National Life Insurance Company through the RFP process to approve the long-term disability plan for a three-year premium rate guarantee effective January first, two thousand and eighteen. And these rates would be per one hundred dollars of benefit, as you'll see in that chart there.
See, we've got a reduction, so I'll second it. Any other, there's a motion second, any other discussion? See none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, number nine.
And this request is asking the board to consider the table recommendation of the Salary Administration Task Force to implement a thirteen-step salary range schedule for paying non-union salary in hourly employees effective January third, two thousand and eighteen. There's some attachments there as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've put, I guess, a lot of time into this as far as researching it. I think it's important. I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that I strongly support it. I think, you know, currently, the twenty-six steps with the eighty-seven counties where we are last, and it's, there's quite a margin there. And I think in, especially with the labor market the way it is, I think supporting this would at least assist as far as retention of employees. I think there's certainly something positive about that. I think experience matters as far as quality of service that we're providing for our constituents and our other residents. And, you know, I strongly support it for those reasons. I think there's also a link with increased morale. And I, it's not my first rodeo, I've been in public service for years. I know that, once you start losing employees, kind of a domino effect, I think a lot of times people will stay together because they enjoy working together. And there's certainly more to a job than just the salary, but I've been around that where you start losing employees. It's difficult, it takes a long time to recover from that. You don't really know where the bottom is. And I think, also in that sense, I think sometimes with, you know, I'm talking with a law enforcement background, but that lack of sometimes experience with newer employees, especially if you're getting a lot of them at one time, I think there's a negative impact to the people served, again, our residents. So for that reason, I don't want to play for the camera for the people in the room, but from day one, I strongly supported this and I'll maintain that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I am going to support the table because I do not feel this is a place that we should be negotiating. This is part of negotiations, we are changing the salary schedule major. We are making significant changes to our salary situation in the county. We have contracts due at the end of two thousand and nineteen, I believe that's the place to talk about this more than this. And so that's the reason I support this, and I will move table this until June, sometime in June of two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second that. Okay, we have motion second. Is there any other discussion? I do want, Ruth, when people leave you to surveys as to why a lot of times, right? What is the top issue? Is it salary or is it something else?
There's a mixture of reasons why. A lot of times they're looking for just another opportunity, that's the trend lately. And also I hear that they are offered a higher wage and better benefits too, but that's not, hasn't been the only reason either.
And also I'm seconding this because this is, this is a major change to our program, and I think it deserves even more time to look at it. And also, again, when we negotiate contracts, as Commissioner Carter said, that's the time to look at it because we tend to treat the union, non-union, pretty much the same in our deliberations. So this will pass for one, not for the other, or we'd have to renegotiate early. So, that's why I'm supporting the table. And I'm going to support that motion too, it's a major impact on our levy. We do recognize the contribution that our employees have to the county, they're valuable. We certainly want to retain everyone that we have, so to do that right, I think to table this and to give it thorough thought is important, it's a major change. We're an outlier among most counties, but financially, sometimes that's good. But again, I think to give this thorough thought and implement it in the right way is important, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We've had, I think we've had thorough discussion on this, and we had tabled it before. I'm going to respectfully disagree, I think now's the time to pass this. Again, there's, I think there's measurements, I think there's benefits connected with passing this, increased morale, I think, serving the public retention. And I, as far as tabling it, I like the fact that it's not forgotten forever, but at the same time, I think now would be the time to pass this. So, for that reason, I won't be supporting tabling it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Mr. Entor. Are you going to, I'm sorry, but are you going to open up for any public comments? Well, we could have a brief, ten-minute discussion about it. Want to do that? Any other discussion? We can do that for ten minutes. If there is any comments, just stand up and station eight and address the floor.
Karen Morris, I was on the Salary Administration Committee, and I did, you know, I think the commissioners are on that now, but I did make a motion to bring this to the board. I just would like to ask a question, what additional information will you be gathering between now and June? That's my question, I guess I, we did have a consultant. Were you, are you going to, to hire another consultant to pay for additional information, or I didn't know what you were thinking, I guess, that's a question.
I guess for me, it's the impact on the levy, really, is what it is, so. We need time to digest that. I don't know that it's a matter of if, it's probably a matter of when this gets adopted, so.
I just have, oh, Betty Combs, the county reporter. They brought in a lot of people, and I'm assuming, I'm just curious, is a number of people in here are asking for your support in passing this? Or are they opposed to it, just a general consensus of who's in here? Asking for support or asking for opposition?
Support.
Support.
That's what I thought.
From Deets Brown County, and I was also on the Salary Task Force, and I know that many years ago, we were at thirteen steps, and somebody had made the request to increase it to twenty-six steps. My understanding is that the minimum and maximum's pretty much stayed the same, it just stretched it out. I know that there's a huge cost to our levy to make this change, but I also need to mention that there was a huge savings to the county when it was stretched out from thirteen to twenty-six steps several years ago as well. I understand the desire to table it, I think that there's support from the commissioners with it, but to table it is just kicking the can down the road. Whether or not you make that decision to do it now and then support that with the union contracts, or push it off later, I don't know. I think that there's a great need for this to be supported sooner rather than later, because it is an issue that definitely needs to be addressed.
Motion for probation, I know this has been on the radar. I said, you remember a thirteen step, I didn't, twenty-five, and I don't remember that, so it's been a while since it was thirteen step. But I do know that this is a huge tax increase to, or tax issue for our taxpayers and citizens of the county. However, I do know that we are debt-free right now. This is, this particular year with our insurance and all the things that are kind of coming together, this would probably be the best time for going to take a look at it. I do know that, what Commissioner Barker talked about, morale, and when we look at some of these steps, they're, each year, I mean, you get to step nine, it's a ten cent increase, and it's just some, and certainly it's an increase, but it's, it's just real tough to take for some employees, and it's always filled with people that are all feeling the same thing, that it's just time for a change, it's time to put it where it should be, and where all the other counties are already at. Some of these departments are losing employees, they're going to our neighboring counties, and we need to retain these people. They have a lot of good education and experience, and they're going next door because they pay better, and they have better steps, and they have better salaries, and it's nice that we can retain them in our own communities, so.
Okay, anybody else?
Nicholas Groo, Brown County. For my example, is City in New Ulm pays anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-six starting, twelve-step program. It makes it very appealing for guys like me, young, with a family, to jump ship. I hate to say it that way, but it's, I mean, it's about retention and keeping the people that are here to, I love working for Brown County, but your own backyard is supporting the twelve-step, their twelve-step. I hope you guys support the thirteen step, I really think it'll be beneficial to keeping people around.
Okay, thank you.
Would you make a comment? I think that we, this has been discussed a lot. The problem that we have as a board is that this is not a one-time cost. This isn't a, I throw some money at it, and now it's all evened up and taken care of. Going to this contract, going to a thirteen step from the twenty-six step, is going to be basically a one-point-two percent levy increase every year from now to eternity. So, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which is one percent of a levy. So, your tax rate for every taxpayer in the Brown County is going to go up a percent because we make this change. This is the big thing to me. We are debt-free, there's a reason we're debt-free, because we're very fiscally responsible. And that doesn't mean that I want to take it out of the employees and not give them what they deserve. But I think there's an appropriate time to do this, and I don't feel that right now, today, is the time that we should be doing this. The other issue is we have kind of a front-loaded system here now, where our increases are faster in the first few cycles than others. Yeah, it does take twenty-six steps to get out to the maximum, that's a lot. Of course, you know as well as I, when somebody hits thirteen, and we move it to thirteen, they're going to say, well gee, I don't get anything anymore, why, why don't, you know, we should have longer increases. I mean, that, we fight that side of it too. So, this is a lot to wrestle with for decision-making, not that that's our job, that's what we're supposed to be doing. So, I just wanted to add those comments before the roll call.
Mr. Chair. And, not to beat that to death, but we're last as far as all the eighty-seven counties, we're at the twenty-six steps. The next closest one, I believe, is at seventeen, and there's only one at seventeen steps. The rest are considerably less than that, even at thirteen, we'd have several ahead of us, we would, that's actually on the outermost. We'd still be in the last third of all the counties, I believe that's accurate if I say it that way. So, I think that this is, the thirteen step is, as far as trying to compromise and find middle ground, I think we found it. And as far as the city in New Ulm, it's actually six steps that we have. Now, again, city government, county, that's different, but it's actually six steps from starting as a brand-new employee to topping out. So, I think that that is our backyard, I think that's very well said, and that should be considered. So, I'll continue to support this when it comes up again, but I really think we've had the discussion, and I think the timing with the levy right now, we have some benefits as far as likely a lower levy. I just really think the timing right now is actually perfect for that, and I would support doing it right now. So I won't support tabling for that reason. Thank you.
Okay. Certain other discussion? Any other discussion?
Brett Rollstrew, Brown County. I know that when people do their exit interviews, they don't necessarily mention money, but I would state that when I talk to other people in the county, when they talk about looking for other jobs or even for other jobs, that does tend to be at least at the top of their list. Just want to mention that, thank you.
When I was looking into this, I checked, starting over here. If there is such a problem with retaining employees, we, across several different departments, we'd be looking for people. I mean, there'd be vacancies not, excuse me, not filled. I checked the website, this is a spot check, the counties and the job positions they were, had available. Brown County was at one, Blue Earth was at two or three, and Nicklet was at two. That leads me to believe it's not necessarily the salary, but has more to do with the job pool that's out there right now. It's definitely an employee's market, so that's part of it. And also, we do keep up with our wages through our surveys that we do with other counties, and then we point, you know, accordingly. We're bringing, usually in the point that I've been in, they've jumped at least a step, there's a couple that haven't jumped at all, but most of them at least go a step up. Several of them have actually gone more than a step. So, I think, I think we keep up in that method. If there was such a problem with retaining employees, we'd be seeing the vacancies across several departments. And that's not there.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to maybe touch on that, I, I think things are held together pretty well, I think it's, I think the employees' contribution, and I also think we have really good department heads, strong leaders, that hold things together. But we all, we work for a living, and I think there's a point where if you can make, you know, bring home more money for your family, afford to maybe, depending, seven, eight thousand dollars more a year. dollars more a year just by going to a neighboring county. Sometimes it's, it's not even that much of a commute, sometimes it's actually less depending where the people live. I think that, I think there might be a, a problem, again, because it's an employee market, we have a labor shortage right now. And I'm just concerned that there might be some consequences we have to pay for that and, and I know with a lot of government jobs, again, I, my background's in law enforcement, but the first three years, if we have a new hire, the first three years, they're really trying to gain that traction. As far as really effective work, it, it takes a while. Now, we, we certainly contribute towards that. There's a cost with training people, so if we have a lot of new people, employees that we're hiring, there is a cost to, to the county in doing that. That's not cheap. And I, you know, I think especially at first, that first two, three years, it's, it's not like having an experienced employee that's been around for ten, eleven, twelve years. So, I think that this money would, this contribution would really serve our constituents and also our employees. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Sit down, Mr. Enter, will you call a vote?
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Mr. Burr?
Yes.
Mr. Winchell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Okay, number two.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Was there some question about this point system? I'm, I'm not real familiar with PAC, you know. So, could you maybe elaborate on that a little bit, prove that you're able to?
As far as, I'm sorry, the question?
Was there some, some question as far as some of the, the pointing, I, where there's maybe some employees that felt it should've been done differently? Am I, am I correct on that?
I, I heard some feedback from the department head saying that some things were, were asking about the, um, the PAC process.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would you approve having a department head maybe give a, a brief report on that? I see he's here. About the, I'm talking about that there was some controversy or there's some question about it. So, would, would you be okay with we maybe expanding on that if, if he feels comfortable?
I guess I'm not sure because it's, there was questions, but, but as far as the process, Commissioner Burr and I were there, as far as how they were pointed, we, I think the committee felt it was done correctly. There were some changes and, and the reason for some of those changes were just, there's a safety component to it.
Technology.
Technology and, and...
Education.
And the education portion related to the technology as, as a part of that, so.
I do have questions also. I've sat through this process, I've sat and looked at this process from the outside, so I don't understand it, because what was the truth that's behind it? And I question when we've had jumps in two points, but when we get the jumps, two grades up, I really need an explanation before I can support it. This is, this is the biggest jumps I've seen happen that I can recall. There need to be, in my, for me, there, for my supporter, that it needs to have an explanation better than what I've got here. Because I, this is a, you talked about before, this is a significant dollar issue and we're making some changes and I can see how some things happened in, in the process that, at least I need to understand why before I can be part of a positive. You have those numbers, Jim?
Um, as far as with the mechanic, um, jump three, that was basically there now, or they have been and it's been clarified in the, in your job description, their education, they need to have an education, a secondary, um, degree to have that. Now, they're also needing to certify vehicles, Brown County vehicles, the Heartland Express may be certified them according to MINDOT standards, so they need to go through that education as well to be able to certify. So, there's an extra responsibility there to be able to do that. They're also, they, they also are called out on other jobs to do such as operating the heavy equipment and so forth, so they do have to get, they're on call, they have to go out and snowfall, whatever it is, as well besides, and then help outside the shop. So, from what I understand, the safety measure, the education, the new technology that mechanics have to go with and, and additional education for that and then the cert, extra certifications of vehicles are just to be able to do their job.
Sometimes, sometimes those jumps are, you know, if they're at the high end of, of one step and then a lot of times they jump two because then they come in at the low end of that, of that second step that they jump. Sometimes that happens. Part what I heard was also that this isn't the first round of this, basically schedule is looked like this, I mean, last time we did it, I don't remember what it looked like. We've had some significant jumps. I've been questioned about this. I, I wanna have it explained so I feel comfortable that I'm supporting what I should be. And is that true that we go back, that in the last time we re-pointed, that several of these positions that took a significant jump this time did that the last time as well?
Um, they did pay jumps of a step, two, maybe, I don't recall, three step in three, or three, I should say.
Do you think it's, I mean, I'm, I ask this question, do you think it's good that we're, we're starting to get significant differences in people within, that are working together here and I'm not totally familiar with what they are required to give for education and that stuff, so it's hard for me to make that call, but, uh, you, you, we're looking at a really some, more differences than I've seen in any other department in the past and I wanna make sure we're doing it right. I don't wanna come back and find out that we didn't do it real well. We may have problems being fat people here if we don't keep it somewhat closer.
And when the department heads put the job descriptions together for the rotation review, which happens every eight years, a lot of times because of the change in the expectations over the eight years, their education requirements have, they have been going up in that area.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, and I, I've shared this before as well. I, I'm not a strong supporter of PAC. I, I really think that something like Springstead, there's, there's money spent on that, but you're, you're having professional consultants that are objectively reviewing it. I'm not saying anything is, is weighted one way or the other, but I think just as far as having that, that overall expertise, I think there's a benefit with it. I, I think PAC was probably a really good program years ago, but I, I think it's, I don't think it's stayed current with the times. It, it just is what it is, so that just, you know, my two cents, because I think whenever you're having that accordion effect like that, I, I think that that probably, there's a reason for that. And I, you know, the, the job market's changed a lot as far as, you know, we see it all the time, they're, they're requiring different degrees, they require different education level certifications for certain jobs. And I, I really think all the time that we spend in-kind donations, employees attending this, this type of review process, I think there's a cost as well by, by doing that. I think something, at least in the future, should be, be considered, something like Springstead or something on those lines. I know a lot of counties that do it that way, a lot of municipal governments do it that way and, you know, having something like that every nine to ten years, I think would be money well spent. Thank you.
Yes.
We discussed that in the PAC committee and, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were not any farther off than those companies would, would've been or that their averages are. This system is working very well. We had a few that were over, a couple over, and what was their percentage that we were off on the, the low side?
Um, as far, oh, was this eight percent?
Oh, the ones that were below, or were more than ten percent off. How many? It was only, it was only a handful, right?
With the highway department?
Yeah, with, with everybody. I'm, I'm talking across the board here now.
Yeah.
About nine, eight or nine. So, this system is working. We're fairly close and the percentages aren't any worse than professional services. And whether you pay for the professional service or, or you're paying a little bit for the salary time off or anything, and those will be the numbers you'd have to compare.
I have had a little bit of background on that as well and even with other, uh, SCHA for example, has Springstead. It's extremely expensive. Those people who not operate cheaply have had comparisons where you're saying they compared Springstead versus, so, like this here, and there is very little difference. That, that, that's why I came to the conclusion too that, and I look at it and I go, okay, you could say two, two things about, one, you could say, well, the individual people shouldn't have to make up other people's wage schedules, right? So, you know, that'd be the negative. The positive is that you've got somebody who actually knows your job and knows, is involved with you and, and working with you rather than just somebody who has no connection to your business other than that they're being hired by you. So, I, I, I think too that this probably works quite well and, uh, don't know that I would, I would favor changing that, but.
Jean, did you have a comment?
I did. Um, you know, that plan was developed in nineteen eighty-nine or something thereabouts. It's been tweaked by us as we move through the system. We're not personnel people, we don't know what we're tweaking. Our job's in the AT office and I'm just using that as an example because obviously it's near and dear to my heart with those people who get paid. They don't relate to anyone of the eighty-seven counties in Minnesota. You won't find how the jobs are distributed within that department. And so, we never have a job comparison. So, you say that it matches, for most departments, maybe it does, but it doesn't even come close for my people. And that's frustrating for them and for me on their behalf. I, I don't know what you do about it, but it doesn't, we certainly have always been in, in the AT office supportive of an outside consultant just because internally, there's nothing in that plan that addresses, um, six different levels of responsibility, um, you know, six, six sets of statutes and then taking that and dividing it among seven people. It, it's just a different environment. And so, I'm speaking on behalf of that one department. I'm not saying that the whole thing, but I will say there is an investment of time, huge investment of time by the people that review the job description, write the job descriptions, review them, take them to the PAC to point them. That cost is tremendous. It took us a year within our department to write the job descriptions and in five minutes they're really outdated because statutes change. So, and, and that doesn't make that the job should automatically get an increase because the statutes change. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying we've never had a fair comparison and that's frustrating for my people. So, I'm glad they hang in there with me. They've been very good, but, and I know that's another discussion away from this, so I apologize for that, but you were on the Springstead thing and I wanted to support that as well.
Mr. Chair.
Just one comment on that too and to Commissioner Winchell's comment. I think sometimes it's tough with PAC, at least from an outsider looking at it, um, it's hard for those folks to know what each individual job does. For instance, there's no one on the PAC right now that is an attorney or an assistant county attorney and yet they're deciding what points to give the jobs that my folks do and I think that can be said across the board. So, I think it's, it's, I mean, perfect system is what we've got, but, you know, to say that PAC can do everything that an outside consulting firm can do, I think is a little, it's not accurate. Because you go with an outside consulting firm, they're gonna look exactly what the job does, they're gonna know what an assistant county attorney does. The folks on PAC, they can read that job description, but when I say, uh, for instance, how many points do you give the dangers of a job? Sure, someone in the highway department, they look at it and say, yeah, they're operating heavy equipment, sure, that job's dangerous. And then they look at an assistant county attorney, well, the job's not dangerous. I beg to differ. I'm sitting four feet away from somebody that probably wants to, or could've hurt on me a lot of time. And there's one deputy that's standing, you know, ten feet away that's gonna stop that person from getting to be, so, you know, in a room full of people sitting there in PAC looking at what are the dangers that, what do I point that? It's tough. I think it's tough to do sometimes, so. That would be my input, I, I think, I don't even, that's not even on the table, but since we're opening discussion, I thought I read that.
Go ahead, William.
Just wanted to comment that it's difficult for PAC, I'm sure, to judge grade all these different, very different positions. But I know in the highway department, we have a, a few positions that don't do well in PAC because they don't have the education requirement. But there's, there's a lot of experience that helps with it, but this, this doesn't count as much as the education requirement, so I'm not sure PAC works that great for us out there. So, it's been accepted for many years.
Yes.
Brian from the highway department. I, I think we kinda got off topic here, what I guess we were after here, but we are kinda concerned that there was a manipulation of the system by some, so that's where, I can't prove it, I can't, but it just seems to jump that many pay grades. It just seems like something, a red flag should've been thrown up, you know? That's a major, three steps, that's a major job description change. When people have been doing the same job, I've been here twenty-six years, those jobs haven't changed that much, so I just, I'm concerned about it that it's not being treated fairly. I don't know.
Mr. Enter, is there, isn't there a process that the department head could? What's the term? I, something about review that again or isn't there?
Appeal it.
Appeal it?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, normally that is done when a department head feels it was pointed too low and perhaps PAC missed something.
But couldn't that be used for this too, I guess? I, I, I don't know. If there's, if there's a discrepancy that's felt out there, um, there's a process for that.
The normal process would be the department had to ask for an appeal. Certainly the board is in, is the final authority on this point. The board certainly could refer a position or positions back to PAC to discuss further and basically do an appeal from that perspective, but it's the board's system.
I guess if there's a discrepancy over how to, how to rather have gone through that process, I, we probably still could go that way if that's what the consensus is of the board.
A question Wayne mentioned, excuse me. The education component has, has potentially something that's not, doing is, is equal or as well within the, and I understand where you're, because I've been on the highway, working with that a while, but I understand where you're coming from. It made me think a little bit like that. I, I, I kinda know the jobs that most people have in those departments, I can see where you may be right about that. It may, it may weigh more when it's an education requirement versus a experience requirement. And, and personally, I sometimes... And personally, I sometimes find the, it alarms me a little when we work with this. The education component gets to be emphasized a little more than the experience other times. And that doesn't, that's an anybody's job. I mean, you're a county attorney, yes, you have to have a certain amount of requirement, but the education you have versus the experience, experience is something that's invaluable in almost everybody's job. And if we're not focusing on that high enough, maybe we need to rethink that process. Because I don't sit in on that, I've never been involved directly in that. So I've been a spectator for quite a while.
And with the position descriptions, they're, they're, a position description to hire for somebody also. So it doesn't really look at the person that's been there for 26 years. It looks at what is the minimum level of experience do they need to be able to do the job? So somebody might have been there for 26 years, but the job description doesn't require the 26 years of experience.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't know the answer. I'm inquiring, as far as if, if we approve this today, does the potential for appeal process, is that, is that still?
Mr. Chairman, and Ruth can certainly speak to this, but PAC points. Points are shared by the HR director with the department head. If the department head concurs with those, they come to the board for a final consideration. If the department head isn't satisfied with those points because they feel some factor was missed, the department has, has a certain amount of time to appeal. And then there's another meeting of PAC to review that position as requested by the department head. As I said, normally that's been an appeal because the department head feels the points are too low. The department head has not appealed these points, so that process is moved. I would come back to the fact that if this board is uncomfortable with one or any of these, the board could refer it back to PAC for further discussion because again, it's your system. That is an option of the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just for discussion that would, I guess, just with the information that's available right now, that would be my preference.
I'll second it. I would like to have it re-looked at again.
Is that a motion, Mr.?
Yes.
We have a motion, second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
So we would bring all the positions back since we're recording all at the same time?
We can't, I wouldn't take any more time than just looking at one or two.
Yeah, okay.
The comment was made about manipulation of the points. I don't believe that's true. We looked at basically what was given in front of us and I think all committee members agreed with, with the points that were given. We can certainly look at it again. Mr. Berg and I sit on the committee. We can certainly look at it again and review that. We don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I think too that experience is sometimes not being rewarded with as much as education in some instances. And I don't know if we could take a look into that, how we point that here, explain to us how it's pointed out so that we have a better understanding of the word, how it's.
One thing about job descriptions, when we look for hiring and we use a job description, qualifications to people fill that position, if you're going to put more experience, let's say, you're going to want 10 years' experience, now that limits your pool of qualified candidates. So we're not going to give as many candidates that we can interview because they won't even be qualified to interview for the position. So I caution on that too, you know? You don't want to limit that either where.
Same thing can be said for raising the education.
Exactly, yes. And you're right, is the educating.
I don't want to, I don't want to unfairly push one way or the other way. I just want to be, I want to feel that we're equal and we're making sure that we're putting as much value on the education component as we put on the experience because they do, they are a very similar component to it. I mean, education sometimes takes, and I've seen this happen, or we've talked about this, the experience sometimes takes the place of education. And then, and I, I just hope we can make sure we find that compromise is right in any of those places where. I, of course, I won't deny this, I didn't go to college, I went to a tech school. I didn't feel it was a bad thing that I, you know, less expensive education than someone else. But I sometimes get concerned with all the people, a lot of the people who are making the rules, making these decisions. They've got college degrees. They are going to tend to think that it's necessary to have a college degree to get paid better. Not true. Doesn't make you any smarter or any better employee. It just is something that you need to get, at least we decided we need to have, we need to get the job. I'm trying to look for equality. I want to be fair. I'm not, that's where I'm going after right now. This is brought to mind because of the changes in this one and this time. I've thought about it before. I'm just asking questions now and hoping that, I'm hoping maybe a little conversation will improve something. Maybe that, if we look at, overlook something, it may be a little better.
Mr. Chairman, contrary to what Gene mentioned about some of her positions, every county has a mechanic, every county has a maintenance worker, some twos and threes, some just have a maintenance worker. There is a good comparison with the 15 county survey. That probably is something that PAC should look at to see if we're in the ballpark for now. And that could be part of that process to refer.
Just wanted to comment, I don't have any concerns with bringing the mechanic position back up for re-review by the PAC. We do have some other positions, I know one for sure, that just made it into this new grade by one point. So there's a real concern that they could, they could go back. I'd really hate to see that happen.
Of these, of these positions?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not sure it's a good idea to have them all, all looked at again.
Well, I think, I think with Ruth and Wayne's recommendation of, you know, what we need to look at, I think the committee will adhere to that, so. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Let's see, 14B, is that?
So this request is asking the board to approve the appointment of student interview as an intermittent part-time deputy sheriff court security at 19.1492 per hour. That's grade 10, step 3, and that would be contingent on the passage of pre-employment, pre-employment, physical and background check with respect to priority would be dependent upon the satisfactory results of those background checks. And then also we're asking the board to approve another intermittent part-time deputy sheriff court security position to be filled from a recent candidate pool. Just for the reason that it's sure is easier on scheduling and especially with the trails, courts of the jail invites to other facilities and so forth. It would just be nice to have the extra staff to be able to do that. It would be intermittent part-time, so it's not, it's not scheduled, you know, scheduled hours.
We'll need a motion for one or two separate reasons.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of student interview.
Sorry. Motion second, Mr.? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, he's still a police officer for the city of Long Creek?
Yes, he is. He's going to maintain that status, right.
And he can do, I mean, he's got the time worked out that.
Yes, because of the.
Scheduling.
Yep, because of the rotating shifts and weekends and all that, that they have to work.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This would be very similar to the position that Jeremy Reed, am I correct? And that, that seemed like it worked pretty well.
Yeah, it worked out well.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then asking the board to approve adding another intermittent part-time deputy sheriff court security position and we would just use our recent candidate pool for that. Interview for this person.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
With this position, as the HR director, it doesn't increase. I mean, it's just basically, there's no benefits connected with it as far as, I mean, there's no cost other than.
Right. And basically, it wouldn't be additional costs. The person, the candidate pool, they already have the police license and all that. They have their qualifications and so, and then basically just to fill in, pick up the hours that we have to have, somebody fills hours anyways. So it's, and the intermittent part-time position does on a priorated basis on a little bit of vacation pay, but it's, you know, the amount of hours that it is, it's not a large expense for the company.
I think it sounds very cost-effective. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Just that we get a qualified candidate that is capable of doing the job.
Yes. Yep, the qualifications.
Not that all of a sudden we, you know, this person hasn't done anything for a year and all of a sudden comes in and is not capable of really doing what they need to do. So, no, that's it.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks.
15D.
And this request is asking to appoint Paul Sarbok as a part-time heartland express supervisor. That would be for $32 to $35 per week, and that's at 15.9573 per hour, grade 8, step 2. And his target would also be contingent on the passage of the pre-employment background checks and department transportation physicals and throughout the screen and so forth.
I'll move it.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Wayne? Andrew, number 11?
Yeah, bridge replacement on County Road 8, that was done last year. It was, the circus was made this earlier this year. Contactors. Everything is done, so it's back to the.
Sorry. Motion, a second, any other discussion? Mr. Enters, will you call it in?
Commissioner Potter?
Yes.
Commissioner Berg?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Borker?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, the new update of tenure for bridge construction program. The RBA highlighted the changes that I've made. Because we got some extra town bridge money this year, didn't need to borrow ahead. So we moved up the bridge placement on the D.C. road from County Road 20 to County Road 22. And because of the problems we've had with the County Road 11 project this year, we changed the project in 2020, County Road 8 from CIR to FDR, which is full depth reclamation. And 2022, we added the Franklin Bridge that already accepted federal funds award. And then we changed another CIR overlay to an FDR overlay on County Road 20. Both those projects had the paving mat underneath that caused problems with the area process. 2023, we moved up County Road 9 from 24 to 23, I fit the area better and we had enough money to move that up. And then in 2027, we had enough funding to add a shoulder widening project on County Road 8 from the south coming line to 24, so that we can keep overlay again in 2028 plus the other roads we have listed there. This is, as we talked about this at the highway committee, as far as planning purposes up to this point, we've included the 125,000 local levy for construction, wheelage tax, the bond payments from the bonding last year, the estimated state aid, which was increased some this year, and the local option sales tax. So this, to have this current tenure plan go as presented here, we have, I think, the board would have to continue the sales tax, or we'll have to cut $16 million projects out there. So I guess there's two things we need to discuss here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Approximately what do we get for the local option sales tax a year?
Oh, 1.6.
1.6.
About $600,000 in wheelage tax.
Yes.
I've sat on this committee for the last 12 years. I've watched the transformation from where we started to where we're at today. I think Wayne has done an excellent job of finding ways to maintain the highways in this county. We, probably the one that benefited the source is the sales tax issue. We're making progress and it's the first year that I've seen we don't have roads and we don't have funded out. That is unreal, in my opinion. We've, it's not cost, we not made taxpayers feel like they're paying a ton of money to get that done. They play, people like their roads done properly. So I would urge that we continue the process we're doing because it gives us that option to catch up, to maintain, and if we get into a difficult year, we have some time to slow down if we have to or something. Right now, I like seeing that, looking out to the future and a few years, that we can start working on redoing the roads. Because that's technically what it is. By the time you get 10, 10 years off from now, we'll be starting to do the roads over than we were doing when I got on the board. That's, it's nice to be that comfortable. Because we spent a lot of time talking about something that would be unpleasant for all, any of you to go talk to your constituents about is, we're going to turn your blacktop road into a gravel road. If you want to excite somebody, try that. It will get their attention very quickly. So I, I strongly support continuing that. When we initially did it, we did not have very much opposition, in my opinion. It went much better than I expected and I think in the time we've had that in place, I maybe had two people complain. So I think people understand what we're doing.
That's true. Wayne, can you give me, I know cold and cycled replacing, but you could touch on that. FDR, the full deck replacement, I don't know that I've ever really, know what that is, so.
The cold and place recycling, you know, we grind up the top four inches of blacktop, add some oil to it, lay it down. The FDR, you grind up all the blacktop plus probably half as much gravel. Mix it all together, lay it down, but then you have to put a little thicker overband on it.
So the cold and place recycling has an overlay over the top of it?
We put up three inch overlay on that.
Okay. And then a FDR would have four or five?
Probably, we won't know until we design the project, but probably four at minimum, four or five.
You're kind of winding up with the same quality of road, just a different process to get there with. Doing probably a little more expensive.
The cold and place recycle has more strength in it per inch than the full depth reclamation does. Because we're not stabilizing that with oil. You can add oil to that, stabilize that too, but that's a pretty significant cost. And I think we're better off putting a little more overlay on instead. So that's a.
Is there, is there, what determines it's going to be cold in place or full back condition of the road surface to start with?
Yeah, well, no. We like the cold and place recycle because we think it's a cheaper process and we get a good result down the road. The roads that we're thinking full depth reclamation, back in the late 90s, the county tried paving mat. And so there's a mat laid down and then they put two inches on top of that. It never stuck to the layer below very well. and then they put two inches on top of that. It never stuck to the layer below very well. You take a shovel, pop it off. And it won't run through the cold-in-place recycle process. Plugs up the screens. So on eleven, we tried milling off just below that paving mat. But then we found out there was less material under there than what the plan said and what our cores showed. We cut our forty-five cores. So we ran into some strength issues. We got into the gravel, which you don't want to do with a cold-in-place. So instead of that happening to us again, possibly, we thought we'd try the FDR.
So if we do full deck, are we taking that mat out of there?
We're grinding it up.
Grinding it up.
Because then you don't run it through a screen.
Oh, okay.
You just mill it and mix it with gravel and blacktop. You roll it, lay it back down and roll it. Makes a good base. It just won't go through the screens for the cold-in-place recycle process.
And in each of these processes, the road deck increases by the overlay in temporary, is it?
Yes.
Because you use all the material in both cases?
You use all of, yeah, it's a completely hundred percent recycled material. But then it increases the height of the overlay.
Mr. Chairman, as discussed with Wayne and Andrew in the Highway Committee, the tenure plan was put together with the consideration of continuing the sales tax. If the board approves this updated tenure plan, we would note in the minutes, understanding that the continuance of the sales tax for transportation will be considered in the process required by the state of Minnesota. In other words, we can't take action on the sales tax, but if the board moves in that direction, then Wayne and the county attorney and Mindot and the auditor's office will all work together to get that process going for consideration. So that's a totally separate process, but we would note that in the minutes with that understanding that that will proceed.
Yeah. Because we're going to have to collect the sales tax through most of next year to get enough money to pay for the twenty-nine project. So next year sometime, the board will have to go through the process of either adopting it or not.
I'll move the, review this tenure road program and work towards the continuation of the sales tax for transportation.
Second that.
Okay. We have motion second. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, number thirteen.
Monthly update. Scott, any question? Cold-in-place recycle projects are being paved right now. The first lift is all done. Six and thirteen project has the second lift done. We're working on County Road Twenty project now. I suppose we're not getting much done today, but we need about four good days to make the done paving. Then we'll be shouldering and striking up. So that's progressing. The municipal projects that we had in Springfield have been completed and open.
Corner is, that corner looks much better. It's not perfect yet, but it's much better than it was. So you'd have to go up the house to get it.
Yeah. It does look a little tight still, but yet when you consider where it was, it's an improvement. We didn't want to go outside and end up right away.
Yeah. So from the community outside, thank you. It's good, beneficial, a little help a lot in that, pushing that back corner.
The Prairieville Bridge project has been replaced with a traffic. We have a little final touch-up work to do in the ditch. We had to change a field entrance because of power line change where they put their guy wires. So we had to adjust the field entrance. So that is completely done. Wider. County Road Twenty Bridge project, the pipe is in. Mostly backfilled. Backfilled, they're working on, they're on clay grade right now. A little wet out there today, but they're close to final clay grade and they rock and paving after that. So that should be done hopefully later this week or early next week. The Roundabout Project, twenty-nine and four, they've got Kirby Gutter for it. I talked to the people out there. They were planning to start paving today. The weather and how that's happening, but that's moving along. On ditch work, is there anything to add? We're just kind of waiting on harvest. We're getting just more of the other fall repairs. We're still on all that, thirty inches here from all the airport. And it looks like we might have one system, or a branch of a system for a clean-out bid coming this fall. As far as future work, I just wanted to update you. I got some information from U.S. Fish and Wildlife about the Franklin Bridge. They determined there was no effect for the prairie clover, which is an endangered plant in this area. But they did give a may affect the northern long-eared bass, which we've talked about in the past. There'll be some extra steps we need to do because of that. So.
Northern long-eared bass?
Yeah.
Bass? Bass? Okay. That's a lot better.
Can you remember, we had to deal with them. We could cut trees in the winter time before.
Yeah.
That's great.
There'll be some tree cutting out there that we'll have to cut them in the winter before, before the end of March.
Well, it makes a lot more sense.
It's scary catching one of those things.
And as far as maintenance, we've completed most of our patching and we've started shouldering. We ended up detouring for County Road Twenty-nine to do because of the Roundabout Project. Number eight going south of twenty-nine to sixty-eight. It's really, that's the one that has the paving mat underneath. It wasn't, it was in poor enough shape. It was starting to really come apart. So we ended up putting a patch over the whole two miles. And we used our FOB mix from the, from our contract with the Central Specialties to get that.
Hold that thing together, then.
Well, we have a project scheduled for that. I can't remember. It's a few years down the road. So it'll hold together for that long.
But will that, even with it loosening up underneath the mat, will this?
When we get it back.
Will it hold down then?
Back to regular traffic, where there isn't so many trucks running on it.
When is the Roundabout to get the we open?
Over a second.
Got a question?
Question on the Roundabout. Why do they run the water? Their idea is to take the water that comes into there and channel it specifically, not just letting it on shoulders. Is there a reason for that?
When you're designing a road, you want to get the water off the road. And you can't change the gen, the water flow if the road wasn't there. So you have to keep that in mind when you're designing a road. And so I know there's some concern out there, but I think all the water is going to the south side. That is the flow of the land.
No, that I understand. But what I'm asking is, is the roadways are built with curves like that and stuff. Oh, that's to channel it, make sure it goes that way?
Channel it to go to a catch basin, heat it off the road.
Right.
And then it gets into the road. And they do some moving so that you get people to slow down. I mean, they squeeze you down so people want to slow down. And then they bring you over this way to get you to go back over this way. It's just, it's all a process that they've learned. It's the best way to get people to slow down instead of buzzing through there faster than they should and get the water.
Do the, are the signs wider in that, in those areas? Because there is a concern about how narrow that road is, the combines will be, they'll be driving on the curb. We're not sure if, I guess, I don't know where the signs are going to be placed, but I'm assuming they're wide enough that wider things can get through there.
They'll be placed off the road at their standard required. There's a certain required distance off the edge of the road. And there'll be some, there could be some issues with the median there. But they've been building these in farm country for a while. I think they know that.
There is a concern on the culvert in the west, southwest, if that culvert's big enough, very southwest corner that goes into the drainage ditch there.
So you're a quarter mile away from that. Because they've got, what is it, thirty inches going underneath the roads in several places. And if that channel's not the ditch, it has to go through the twenty-four.
Yeah. But if you go back to the initial agreement back in the fifties, that was put in a thirty-inch just because it was an agreement between landlords and it had to be six inches bigger than the one three hundred and four. It was not done hydraulically, but it was not that big.
So hydraulically, it's, it's big enough. Or so the other ones are big, are bigger than they should be?
They don't normally do hydraulics on anything smaller than forty-eight inches. So I don't want, I can't answer that question because the state did all the calculations on that. But they wouldn't put in a, a fairly constant, they wouldn't put in a fifteen-inch culvert if it needed something bigger.
If you get that big culvert dumping into the drainage ditch and it's still running over the power, I'd take a look at that ditch. It'll be running over the top someplace else. Hydraulics, if you just think of it, I realize that water doesn't flow as fast soon if a ditch is under a pressure of going through a culvert, it would be, there's a restriction part in the end. If I knew that kind of extreme, it'd probably be the drainage ditch itself.
There's a fair long distance where the water comes from the east. It goes under Highway Four through culvert. And then it goes south through that culvert. But also, we changed the, the shape of the ditch on the north side of the road so more water can go down to the drainage ditch on the north side.
That will treat that culvert. That's deeper than.
Plus, we've added an eight-inch tile in the south side, an empty, open intake that drains directly into drainage ditch thirteen. So on normal rains, I'm fairly confident that it's going to handle. It's going to stay in the road ditch. But if you get a four or five-inch add, it's still going to go across that person's land because that's the way of the land. So.
Are we, is that on our working part tour?
Yes. There is, there is a concern with, back in ninety-one, when the twenty-nine was regraded, they left the area outside the roadway, fairly gold. The landlord just voluntarily stayed away. Grass grew and it became a ditch. So we need to look at that, whether we should purchase that right away now. But the question is, now with the eight-inch tile there, right next to the right way, is that going to dry it up enough for it to be able to farm? It's just, the road has been raised because of the Roundabout Project. So it doesn't leave a big ditch. The question would be, how big of a ditch should we really need? And we have some narrow ditches that we built on six and thirteen this year, just so, because we didn't want to have to purchase additional right away. So we've had a lot of discussions with the landlord. He knows it's something to be considered down the road. But that's something we, we.
We're holding.
Everybody would look at on the road, or the board would see it for themselves. Okay. Then we're continuing to do top cutting and weed spraying. We've sprayed one hundred forty miles this summer and we have thirty-four miles left that haven't been sprayed from last fall and this summer. So we're hoping to get everything covered between last fall and this summer. Continue to blade gravel roads as it, if the weather cooperates and it needs it. And we've done a lot of hauling gravel. Probably have a little bit left. And then we have some tile and culvert repair coming up. This is the time of year we start doing that.
A motion to accept our file.
Second. Motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 14C.
As you know, back in April, the board awarded a seeding of buffer strips from eight systems. And because of the wet spring, it never got done in the middle of June as it was supposed to be. Andrew was in contact with the person and he sounded like he was still going to.
Still show up.
He was doing that. So we gave him more time. And then you don't want to seed in the middle of July because that's not according to the book, you know, once for the end then. But then once August came around, we started trying to get ahold of him again. Andrew was, he left a lot of messages and he never got back to you. And we heard, we talked with Sibley County because he got their, their, their project also. And they made a deal with him to mow the weeds down in their buffers that didn't get seeded. And so we went out with our own forces and mowed our weeds down because we figured it'd take him about two weeks to do that. So then ours would be dried up and it would be good timing when he could seed ours. Well, I, late last week, I called Sibley County and yes, he did mow down the weeds, but he hasn't seeded anything yet. And so we've lost faith that he's going to come and get ours done because there's about a two-week window here where we can still seed. But then after that, it gets too late. We would need to wait and dormant seed it, lay it up for. But we don't really want to do that. We'd rather get it done. So I talked with the second low bid, Evergreen. They're willing to do it for their original quoted price, but with the extra trash on the field from the coat of weeds, they felt we might need to do an extra work with a disc, chew it up. Or if they didn't need a disc, there would be extra plugging up of the digger or whatever. It would be extra work. That's why they threw in the seventy-five dollars an acre if they need the disc, or if they didn't need to, but there was extra trash in the way, forty dollars an acre. But then if it was, I've seen some of the buffers that the landlords kept in dark black, not as we, then it would be the original quoted price.
How many acres are we talking on?
Talking one hundred thirty-nine acres, roughly.
Kid, does he think that they can get that accomplished by the middle of September?
He said they're very busy, but they know our situation and he said they can get it done. We work on it. We work with them on a smaller scale. They seed as most buffers.
Two years ago, they, they had a few acres.
This does present issues of what the future holds, who do you trust to work with in the future besides?
Well, we probably will not offer the other, Tony's Outdoor Services a chance to cove again.
Would have been a perfect year to get it seeded early.
But back in June, we had a hard time going out staking it because it was so wet and hot. Some guys walked in and, pardon my language.
Well, I think we have to do something. I don't think we want to let it go and we try to wait till next spring again to do that. It's going to get to be a bigger mess.
So I guess I don't know if we need to do something special with the one who was accorded the quote before. Do we send him a letter?
Well, we'd send him a copy of the board action, the letter saying the board is, is, if that's the board's action, is to rescind that offer. Send a copy of that.
And we're within our legal bounds to do that.
Wayne and I talked about this last week, conversation. He hasn't done anything to fulfill his part.
I agree with Commissioner Potter. You know, I'm sure he had good intentions and as things went south weather-wise for him, I'm sure he got backed up. And it's unfortunate that he didn't call and try to work with us and figure out, you know, a method or whatever. At least no worries that. So I think that this is actually what we got to do. So.
So what do you, what do we need to do? Rescind that previous motion? And I could see by the, as I made the motion, so then that means I could be the one to make, rescind or it can be done by anybody. And I'll make the motion, rescind and offer the. Just rescind first?
Okay. Sorry. I'll second that.
Motion second to rescind the previous motion. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Assuming we need a new motion.
And Mr. Chairman, I think we could use the wording at the bottom of the page of going to accept the vote from Evergreen, which also notes the possibility of the additional cost for game or extra work. Are you okay with that language, Williams?
Question about this, and you mentioned we put a date that's not completed by because of the weather, like it's one of September or something. You don't want to go past that because if you get termination, they plant it on the thirtieth, more than likely you'll have a lot of interkill on that.
Yeah, depending on the fall.
Then you have, then it's going to have to be done, basically, almost going to have to wait to, wait until a few weeks of freeze up.
Lately, I have a whole surgery on it.
Well, I'll make a motion. We offer this from entering an agreement with what we call Evergreen. And according to the, the quotes includes part of it and a deadline of, do you feel comfortable, what, twentieth?
What, the other week is that?
No, no.
September twentieth is Thursday.
I'd probably say the twenty-first.
Yeah, twenty-first. Yeah.
That doesn't give them a topic night, it's already.
No, it's not. And if you listen to the forecast, in parts of the county where we have, this doesn't have excessive an inch of rain already, they're talking about one to two today during the day and one to two tonight. They could wind up with four inches of rain there and almost eliminate some of that planet.
That may, that might happen, but I guess we don't know until we try.
Right, I agree. You've got to be ready to go if they, if they put them in a difficult, if they're busy already, it may put them in a difficult, in a certain area that they can work on.
Yes, we understand that.
Okay, so did you get?
Mr. Chairman, if I understand the motion, it says bold number two with completion required by nine twenty-one eighteen.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion second.
Who has a second?
We have a second. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, explain.
We're keeping a, the, my board representative for the, very important. Him and I have kind of been in conversations, he decided he didn't want to continue to finish out his term. So I went out finding a new individual to fill that term out and that individual is a junior figure, lives about five miles east of Springfield, kind of between Trenton and Comfort. And he's willing to finish the term out and else it helped out with the short-term work with to find out if he would be interested in going further ever. So if you need a motion to approve our work, we can, we can approve it.
Also.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. So one is minutes from, it's twenty-first.
Mr. Chair, I had a, Ron County Evaluation Center personnel committee meeting on August twenty-ninth at two o'clock. We go on here. And what we were really discussing, the reason for that, the meeting was called was, again, except on the personnel committee. And we're having maybe some, some challenges just with the labor shortage, just with recruitment and retention's been pretty good. But, you know, we want to keep those employees, so we're, we're just looking at different options that are maybe something productive as far as trying to retain some people, you know, trying to offer incentives. We don't, we can't justify more full-time employees. It just doesn't work with our business model right now. We're, we're full right now. But as far as the part-time, we're looking at just maybe different incentives that we can provide, you know, maybe some flexibility, things like that, that aren't a direct cost. Because we have to, have to watch the bottom line. So we're just basically involved some strategies and considerations that we're going to bring to the full board, you know, either next month or the month after, very soon as far as we're working on that. And that would conclude my report unless there's questions about that. And then on the thirtieth, had a RED meeting, and again, that's regional evaluation for diversion. That was at two o'clock, we go on here. One thing that we're, we're kind of looking at, we've talked, we've been conferring with the sheriff's office as well. We're going to be hiring, that's already been approved, we're going to be hiring a social worker, someone with therapist background, some expertise with, with mental health therapists to, to work on, that's going to be a big component of our, our RED program. And one, one thing that's, that's really being considered is, you know, the, the person is going to directly work with individuals suffering from mental health challenges within our community. And there is a really close connection, if you, you know, Julie Hogan is the supervisor, but of that, of adult mental health. But there's a close connection, the earlier we can get these individuals before they're, you know, involved in law enforcement issues where they've committed a crime, there's a huge benefit there. It's very cost-effective. So we're looking at strategies of when we, when this person is hired, how we can, you know, fully implement this person and, you know, try to get the, the jump start and use that resource from day one. One component of that is, you know, the closer they're connected with law enforcement. So this is going to be, this individual's going to basically be working day hours, Monday through Friday, because that's when resources are available as well, you know, for this person to maybe get someone suffering from a mental health challenge into maybe the appropriate treatment. They, they pretty much have to be around during the day because we've, we've contemplated, you know, having the person work in evenings and, and things like that. But when we look at really the numbers and the calls for the service, it, it's, the benefits really outweigh the disadvantages of having the person work more like, more or less day hours. The other component is that we, we discussed is there's, there's been changes with the, our licensing for law enforcement is through the Pulse Board, Peace Officers Standard and Training Board. And there's mental health classes that we have to take now every year. And it's, it's mandated in, in law enforcement, there's mandated and then there's selective training. You have to meet a certain amount of pulse hours, thirty-six hours every three years. But the mandated training, it's like when we qualify with our firearms, defensive tactics, those classes are mandatory. You will do them on an annual basis. They've recently, since July first, they've changed the criteria for, where we have to have mental health training on a, on an annual basis, we meaning law enforcement, licensed law enforcement. So in talking with Julie, talking with the chief deputy, Sidle, we think there's a really big advantage of having this person involved with, with training as well, because they're going to meet every law enforcement officer. And, you know, that, that's going to be key. And the other part of that is we'd like to have the individual, the employee, at least have a workstation, if not a full-out, all-out office in the law enforcement center because they're going to be closely connected with, with law enforcement. Now, we have a limited space. So that's, we had talked about our law enforcement center building committee and Commissioner Winchell, you sit on that. So I, at some point, I'd maybe like to have a conversation with you and just cover some highlights. There's an office right now that's being, it's still being occupied by the State Patrol. I don't believe they pay any, any rent or anything like that. And they, they, actually, their office right now is in their new building up in Cortland, but they still have a space there. So that's something that maybe in the near future, we could take advantage of. The other thing is, you know, there's other options because if, if that wouldn't work out or for whatever reason, we're looking at different workstations. We, we know the closer we can have this person working with law enforcement, there's going to just be benefits there. And then also, we're, we're talking about how we can implement this person with, with the training, like the Barbara Schneider, partnering with some of our law enforcement officers that are certified trainers. So that, that's going to be key too as far as sending this, this new employee to Barbara Schneider, that, to the instructor certification course. So we had a, it was a very worthwhile meeting. We, we talked about several aspects of that, that position and, you know, again, how we could hit the ground running. That would conclude my report unless there's, there's questions. But at some point, Commissioner Winchell, if we could maybe have another part of that conversation because this will come in front of the, I'm confident this will be coming in front of your committee meeting at some point.
Yeah, I would like to. I know there is an office there. I've never seen it, so it would be good to prove what's there.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay.
You guys have any, was it? I did have the wellness committee last Thursday. Some, some of the employees in the committee talked about using this skin check machine that, that looks at dark spots and they thought that that was helpful in evaluating where they're at as far as skin condition goes. There was, you know, talking about wellness, there was discussion about the padded cells, but how it's a deterrent for prisoners acting badly. They don't want to go in there, so they, they seemed to have, they act better, I guess, since we've gotten those in. And the other discussion was of, of the employees in the jail that, you know, if you've got inmates acting better, it boosts morale and you didn't have such a bad day because you didn't have some of those incidents going on. So I guess we hadn't talked about that before, but, so anyway, that, that is, it has been a benefit overall for all employees and prisoners. The budget that's left, there's some money left over in the budget that will be used in the health fair coming up. There's some discussion about the employee assistance, how to improve that, or some feedback and just, just getting that to work better down the road. Hydration stations, Jesse's going to put together an inventory as far as the condition of our water fountains in, in all the buildings, all the county buildings, I believe. There is discussion about here in the courthouse that these are probably the oldest and replacing or looking at the possibility of putting out a new one or something that would fill a water bottle and, you know, just a, a better way of doing that. So, and then also the, I think the units down in the break room, they don't have a big enough reservoir as far as water. They'll fill a coffee cup and they'll fill my water, so we discussed about getting a better, bigger reservoir in those, those stations. So, other than that, United Way Day of Caring is October thirteenth and that's where employees can volunteer to help out needy people with yard work or different things around the house. So if you're interested in that, I think you can talk to.
Ruth and Melissa.
Ruth or Melissa would have that information. So, anyway, that's October thirteenth, so that's it.
Nothing for me.
Okay. All right, so we don't move the courts. We'll go to Calgary. Today is the fourth, the rest of today.
Open.
Do we have a building committee coming right up?
We do, and it'll be at the License Bureau, so approximately eleven o'clock, eleven oh five. It was scheduled for ten thirty and I let Sue know that we'd be late.
Okay. And then Solid Waste Station meeting, or Advisory Committee at three thirty.
Open.
Building Committee and Solid Waste, open the fifth.
There's nothing I'm planning to be on or anything, but I have a penny padded cell meeting with Captain Mathles, he's going to show me that. And then at two ten, I have a stakeholders meeting in Mankato that I'm going to do a presentation on again, no, no party or anything, but just FYI county-related. Otherwise, I'm open.
Commissioner, oh, sorry, open.
We're going fifth.
Yeah.
Open.
Open.
Open, sixth.
Open.
Open.
Sixth, SEHA. Nine o'clock.
Okay, I'm open.
Area tour, here's the nine AM, you name Marshall.
Eight to seven.
Open.
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 Ten.
Bron County Evaluation Center Board Meeting, three thirty.
Open.
Bron County Historic Society, seven AM.
Open.
Parks Committee at Mountain Creek, seven.
Maybe eleven.
I have something written down here and I don't, Little Cottonwood, eight thirty. Oh, I have a Suttrails meeting, that's a Suttrails meeting at eight thirty, in the Little Cottonwood Room of Human Services.
On the eleventh.
Yeah, eleventh at eight, eight thirty to, I had Delman Castle at nine thirty. Otherwise, I'm open.
One thirty, Community Health Finance Committee meeting in Nickwood, let's see, Peter.
Okay, so I have the Suttrails meeting also and SWCD, which. I don't know, SWC unless somebody else can, I probably can make the end of the SWCD meeting, but.
What, what time is the SW?
Nine. Nine thirty.
Not going to work for me, I've got planning and zoning that morning.
Yeah.
I, I can, I can maybe work that with Suttrails.
Okay.
I got planning and zoning, planning and zoning at nine AM. I have another here and I can't figure out what I may know about something for the afternoon, but it must be personal, the way it's going. So, I'll figure out what, I'll, it's come, or I'll get something.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question, I, Gene had sent out the two September tenth ditch. Do we have, who's going to that, Sleepy Eye?
I could cover those. One at nine and one at eleven on the tenth, that would be a week from, well, next Monday.
I think those are.
I don't remember.
The one is both of ours, but I think the one is mine.
CD forty-five and CD sixty.
The one's Sleepy Eye.
I, I have it open if somebody, you know, if you want to do it, Dean, that's fine. I've got the day open if, and I can do it if you want.
Let's, if you can cover that, that's fine.
Okay.
The, the one in Sleepy Eye is small, that's the one north of Sleepy Eye, it's a very small system.
Yeah, they're both in Sleepy Eye.
Yeah.
The extension office, I believe.
Yeah, that's where Dean is.
Yeah. They, they are very difficult meetings to cover.
And then I teach today's correspondence here, Friday, September four, fourteenth, at ten o'clock, Comfort Community Center. That is landlords on ditch twenty-four, looking at feasibility study potential.
Okay.
After meeting, any comments?
That was in my area, so.
No, that, that's a question.
Now, that, that's a question, was it a county ditch? This is gonna be something we should have talked to Andrew or Will.
P D seventy-four. Judicial ditch.
I will make sure that if we need someone there, I'll be there. And I will call or stop at the highway on my home yet today and find out.
Ten o'clock, Comfort Community Center.
I know it's in Comfort, yes, in my district. All right, so we're, that was the twelfth, we're covering?
Fourteenth. Oh, I'm sorry, we're at year.
Where we were.
All right.
Going to the twelfth?
Open.
Open. Open.
Open.
I have on here extension committee, but I think that was canceled. There wasn't one we were gonna be there. I haven't received any information from, I don't know, Maya something, a new person that took the land's job temporarily. So I don't think that's happening.
We haven't received anything at this point yet.
I'm gonna assume it's not gonna happen.
Okay, so that's, we're going to the twelfth, thirteen?
Open.
Open. Open.
Open. Open. Fourteen?
Open.
Open.
Open. Open. Open.
The fourteenth, are you?
Oh, that's right.
Judicial ditch twenty-four.
Judicial ditch.
In Comfort.
I got on the calendar, yes, I had that.
Okay, the seventeen?
I have a workforce joint powers meeting at four, but I, I'm gonna have a conflict with that. I, I have a, there's a jail diversion training that I'm going to inferable from one to four. So I don't know if someone could maybe, I, I missed the last one. I had another conflict at the last workforce joint power. So, you know, maybe someone could attend that. Be four o'clock. Otherwise, I'm gonna have to, I, I think this jail diversion training would have to be priority. And I, I can't get between the two. Even if I left a little early, it's too far. Otherwise, I'm open, that's all.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I can throw that.
Could you? It's four o'clock. I think it's, is it at same place where you have your? Do you know where the workforce, or I can touch bases with you.
Yeah.
Then later.
And what's it called again, workforce?
Joint Powers. Workforce. Four o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, is that everything, Mr. Wayne?
No.
In back, six thirty.
What day are we on there?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay.
Open.
Open.
And the eighteenth puts us two weeks out. Workforce center that's in?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else? There's a county meeting adjourned.